I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item, item C is approval of agenda. I think we have a change to this.
Mr. Chairman, I would propose that we amend the agenda to drop item M, which is the nutrition services contract, and make no other changes and approve the agenda as amended.
Do I hear a second?
I second that.
All approve?
Aye.
All against?
And Mr. Chairman, just as a point, so that item was approval of a contract for Sedexo Food Services. The district has gone out with RFP and head respondents to the RFP, and at this point in time, Sedexo is the winner of that RFP. And just to make sure that you guys know all that, and then also that the state of Oregon has an expectation that we'll be able to lay out for them a plan about how we're going to provide food service July 1 forward. And as I understand it anyway, July 1 forward. And so we need to have that in by May 20 of this year. We have another board member on the, a board meeting on the 16th. And so I'm hopeful that we'll bring that agenda item back on the 16th. For debate and consideration.
So if I might, Mr. Chairman, I would anticipate that we're up against it and need to approve the contract. I'd also say that during the listening session tonight, amongst other times, we had some good dialogue about what we're serving for breakfast and for lunch and hope that we can form, I don't know if it's former, formal or informal, but a work group to try to work through what our options might be. So a year from now, our choices and our options might be different.
Agreed, and I think that would be a very good idea. It is a one-year contract extension. It does have the opportunity to renew after that going forward, but currently it's a one-year contract with Sedexo. And I do think having the district put together a committee to review in depth the food that we serve next year would be a really good idea.
Thank you.
I'll try not to make too many suggestions about what we ought to do next year, but I do this one. Thank you.
Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda as is after the M1 change?
I think we voted on it.
We did.
Motion passed unanimously.
Outstanding. Comments from the public? I think that's our superintendent.
Yes, thank you. This evening, we have six public comments. I think it's important to know that the text on these comments is much greater than that which I'll read out this evening, but the entire text that's submitted for public comment is provided to the board and submitted for the public record and is read by the board and available to the public. So I'll summarize the six public comments that we had today, or at least prior to noon today. The first public comment, the comment is critical of the board in regard to public comment practices, specifically not allowing for in-person comment and the change to policy BDDH, which limits criticism of the board. Public comment two, the commenter thanks the board for their work on the Central and Tequena school issue. They offer a historical perspective on the school and indicate a hope to retain Central School into the future. Public comment three, the writer asks the board to adopt an outcome-based K-12 academic improvement plan at the meeting tonight, then makes arguments in favor of such a plan while asking for a timeline for approval of an outcome-based K-12 academic improvement plan in the future. Public comment number four, the comment expresses concern and frustration over the school calendar for the next school year. It adds that teachers plan in advance for the next school year and that the late date of adoption is making that a challenge. Public comment number five, the comment number five thanks the board for your receipt of postcards from the Classified Association and encourages the board to address the wage and financial pressures on employees. Public comment number six, the commenter writes about the current classified salary schedule and indicates classified staff are working hard on a living wage campaign. They further indicate the board increased hourly compensation to BIC and structured support SEAs in October, but compensation should be increased for all classified employees. And that concludes the summary tonight. Be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the list is board business. It's Teacher Appreciation Week, and I'll read the proclamation. Proclamation, recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week, Greater Albany Public Schools Board of Education, proclamation number 2021/22-7. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community, now therefore be it resolved that the Greater Albany Public School Board of Directors proclaims May 1 through 7, 2022 to be Teacher Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that the Greater Albany Public Schools Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Adopted this 18th day of April, 2022. It'll be signed by our Chair, Eric Agunaga, and our Superintendent, Rob Saxton. We have one more appreciation that'll be read by Director Wilson.
Thank you. Proclamation, recognizing National School Nurse Day, Greater Albany Public Schools Board of Education, proclamation number 2021/22-9. Whereas children are the future and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow, and whereas all students have a right to have their health needs safely met while in school setting, and whereas children face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school, and whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years, and whereas school nurses are professional nurses that advance the well-being, academic successes, and lifelong achievements of all students by serving on the front lines and providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children, and whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, parents and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our community's children, and whereas school nurses are members of school-based mental health teams, and whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Now therefore be it resolved that the Albany, Greater Albany Public Schools Board of Directors proclaims May 11, 2022 to be National School Nurse Day, and be it further resolved that the Greater Albany Public School Boards of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our school nurses for their dedication and devotion to their work. Adopted this 18th day of April, 2022, and will be signed by the Chair and the Superintendent.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Chair Morse. Members of the board, I've written down some comments, but I want to take a minute, wanted to share a few things I'm spending the majority of my time on right now, but I also want to take just a second with the two proclamations that you all just read. I, and the postcards that you have, right? Kind of all this stuff together, a little bit. And it is that the work that we've asked employees in the district to do over the past, I'd love to say year, it's not, three years, 10 years? But I'll just kind of go to three here for a second because there's been a difference over the last couple of years in dealing with COVID and the challenges that have been brought by that. And I think also just the expectations of the world and the politics and some of the issues that sort of wash over us on a daily basis. Just got to say, people in the district have stepped up big time and they've worked really hard. I mean, really kind of worked themselves to a frazzle, quite frankly. And I just want to acknowledge that, and it's on the behalf of everybody. You know, our teachers are classified, our administrators, volunteers for the work that they've done on behalf of kids. And really trying to help our kids get through a time that is unprecedented in the history of the world. We just haven't had something like this. And the challenges that they've stepped up to are really impressive. And I know tonight that you all have some postcards. I know you'll talk about that at some point in time. Want to thank our classified staff for being out here tonight and showing up in their blue and representing. And for the postcard, it's beautiful, by the way, and just saying, we're here, we're really important, we do good work. And it's not work just because it's work, but because there's passion to it about what we do on behalf of kids every day. And so I want to thank you for that, recognize that compensation is really important and also how work feels on a daily basis. And so thank you for that, for the work that you do. And I know that there'll be lots of opportunity to talk about compensation as we move forward. And I know the board will say some things about that. And for our licensed staff and for our nurses, I don't know, our license, our teachers have done an incredible job this year, and I don't know how our nurses have done everything that they did. Ever-ready bunny is sort of what comes to mind for me, and that's not even fair. But anyway, just a heartfelt thank you to everybody for their great work. And then the more mundane things that I actually wrote down that I was going to talk about, like budget. So I've been spending a lot of time working on the budget and items related to the budget. And they fit into a lot of different categories, but there's been enough change and variable over the past two years with COVID and staff changes that it's made planning the 2223 budget a real challenge. Lance and Janice Collier are putting our budget document together and have been a really huge help. I know that they're getting close to having something that they would call a first draft, which I'm really pleased about. And our staff have also been really helpful, working hard to provide them with support. And for now, my approach to the budget for next year has been to proceed really conservatively. I'd rather make a conservative financial assumption and then have more resources over the course of next year than to have too few. And we're currently slated for our first budget meeting where we're considered the 2223 budget on May 18. And so looking forward to that date and some more conversation around a number of those issues. Other work that's around me on a daily basis is transition. New Superintendent Andy Gardner is in the district each Friday between now and the end of the school year. I've been walking him through various issues the district's facing and getting his thoughts and feedback before I proceed, especially for those items that have impact on next year, to ensure that the transition is smooth and that he's set to take charge and move in a positive direction quickly, beginning on July 1. Things like the budget, the Tequena Central situation, strategic planning are all part of our weekly meetings. And he understands things very quickly and weighs in constructively on each issue, which I appreciate. Have spent some time recently and over the course of the year on Tequena and Central Elementary Schools. Tonight, I'll provide the board with an initial report on Tequena and Central Schools now that we've compiled information critical to determining how to proceed there. I'm not going to make a recommendation tonight. Instead, the board and the community will be presented with information and collectively, we can consider the implications and in anticipation of a future recommendation for me and then an eventual decision by the board. Strategic planning, we've had a strategic planning committee working since December. And the committee that's been called together has been fleshing out our strategic plan and has continued to meet and work for a half-day every few weeks we get together. We're close to finishing the framework for priorities one and three in the strategic plan. Priority one is focused on equity, while priority three is focused on academics and student learning. We have three more meetings between now and the end of the year. We'll keep on working on this. It is my plan to bring our work on these two priorities, one around again equity and the other on focused on academics and student learning before the board for approval prior to my leaving the district. Just, I think it's important for that work to be looked at, approved, and kind of underway as we head into July. And if we can get further than that before the year is up, then I'll bring that forward as well. Lastly, I just want to make sure that the board is aware and the community is aware that we have our All-Star Evening coming up on the 8th. So, I'm sorry. On May 2nd, thank you. I'm looking at when the letters are going out, not when the event is. So May 2nd, and our mailing went out on the 8th to notify people in the community that their child has been recognized as an All-Star or will be recognized as an All-Star. As usual, Chris Green did a fantastic job of putting something together and sending it out to parents. I didn't get to actually open one, even though I tried to get her to put one together for me so I could, but you got a wide envelope and you unfold some things. There's a couple stickers in there that says, "My child is an All-Star." And if you open up the letter, a bunch of confetti comes popping out at you and stuff. And so I thought it was pretty cool, and that's just, you know, how Chris rolls. So it'll look really, it'll be really great. We, this is not a live event. It's a Zoom event, so it'll be, I guess it's live, but it's not in person. And the order of events will have principals, students, and parents, interpreters needed, enter the virtual awards, then there's a presentation by the principal, talks about the student, and then a recognition on the part of the board chair, vice chair, and board member, superintendent, assistant superintendent saying congratulations. And then we continue to move through the list. But we're excited about it. I think it's a really neat event that the district has taken on over time. It's morphed over the last few years because of COVID. And so even in the planning of this one, when we planned it, we weren't sure where we would be. And so we put it together as a virtual meeting. I'm sure that next year we'll be back in person, or at least I'm knocking on wood about that comment. So that's coming up, and I'm very excited about that and for the recognition of kids who've worked extremely hard this year. And that is my comments this evening. Be happy to answer questions about any of those or anything else. Director Wilson.
Mr. Superintendent, would you have the ability to speak about the listening session and the topics that were covered? Today? Or is that something we can do and love to do going forward to kind of know what
I think you asked-
on the mind of the community?
Yep, I think you've said that before. And so I need to listen better. We had some comments about decision-making with an indication of disappointment in the board making some decision about terminating the prior superintendent and the pay rate for the previous superintendent, for the next superintendent. I'm not going to remember them all. We had several comments about Central and Tequena Elementary Schools and the decision that's coming up there. I think there were three people who spoke to that topic. A couple who were in favor of making sure that Central remains as a school. A couple who talked about the challenges of the sister school situation and the wish that they could be independent standalone schools or at least have two principals, one principal at each school when it comes to student behavior and making sure that things run the way that they, we would hope. There was some discussion about assessments and the percentage of students in our district that meet the standard on state assessments and the low percent specifically in multiple areas, but specifically in math.
Rob, food?
Ah, yes, thank you. Well done, sir. And there were a couple other people too, since I'm stumbling on a couple of these. Oh, and I have them in my notes as well. So there was some discussion about food and food service and the amount of sugar that we have in some of the foods that we put out in the kind of a daily allotment, as well as some of the dyes that are contained in the food. Some discussion there specifically about trauma-informed care and student behavior. There was some discussion, again about, I guess there were four then around Central School, the demographer, little discussion about a campaign promise that wasn't, but there was a discussion about when the district originally talked about going to a split school where we had a sister school, so a K-2 and a 3-5. And the discussion that was held then about that this is how we intended to move forward and how long does that promise hold sway in order to have it be a promise fulfilled? And those are my recollections.
I had one more. We had
Yes.
a new budget committee member. What was her name?
Yes.
Is it Dana?
It's Dana. Has done some background work and highlighted for us the disparity in test results in the different schools in the district, and that was pre-COVID. So the disparity has likely gotten worse since then. And what's the role of the budget committee in making recommendations to improve that?
And I think also discussion about the staffing levels at different schools based on the outcomes that we see and the dollars that are spent.
Livable wage also was also discussed. Livable wage?
Yes, I think I talked about that as in relation to to nutrition and those things, but there was also livable wage that was discussed as part of that particular topic. Or that presenter, yes, on the part of classified employees. All right, I think that's pretty close. Thank you. Sorry, I'll be more concise next time.
I would just say, again, as we remove the agenda item, I would ask the question in that, at what point is it appropriate to create a work group or a subcommittee to look hard at other options, what the district might do in the way of our food program? Is it now? Is it when Superintendent Gardner shows up? But I don't, I know how time escapes us, and I don't want to let that one get away. So nine or 10 months from now, we really don't have those options because we didn't do the work. I think it's important work.
Agreed.
What's required to start in motion a committee like that? To seek people from the community who are interested to be part of that and such?
I think I know of at least two candidates, but I would defer to the superintendent and the Chair and Vice Chair to come back with something that starts moving the ball down the field, if you will.
We should bring that forward at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is board reports, board liaison reports. Michael, do you have anything?
I don't have anything tonight.
Roger? Brad? Okay. Board member reports. Do you have anything to?
No.
Roger? Okay, I'd like to read a couple things. And then I want to discuss an important topic within our district, behavior of our students. Student behavior has been an issue since coming back from COVID pandemic and back into the classroom setting, something kids aren't used to. We expected and understood that this would be an issue for a while while students re-acclimated to in-person school environment. As part of our recent memorandum with staff, our teachers and other staff members were supposed to form a committee with some of our district office people, meet and discuss and problem-solve these behavior issues at the various levels within our schools. This has not occurred, and it is pretty upsetting. We haven't got this simple task done. So we as a community need to do everything possible, provide the best learning environment possible for our students. And part of that is to maintain proper behavior with our children, students, you know, so we have the proper environment for academic success, okay? So I'm just publicly pushing the idea of us moving forward with that and getting it done. Another topic that has come up, and it's been through some of the listening sessions, and I would go on record saying I really like the idea of us kind of bringing up what we talked about at the listening sessions because it's important. I think we had six or seven questions, not that many, because there was quite a discussion for each of them, which I think is real important and allows the people that come to ask questions to actually not only make a statement, but actually get to talk a little bit and hear where the board or the superintendent is coming from. And I think that's important. One of the things that was brought up that Senator Maye brings up all the time to us, and we all get emails from her, and she's a go-getter, which is fantastic, have brought up the topic of academic performance and the need to both track and ensure our youth have the skills needed to succeed upon graduation. I really believe, you know, what academic skills you have are a building block for your success or failure, unfortunately. And we only get these kids up until 12th grade, right? And then they're on their own. They're supposed to be adults, and they're supposed to be ready for success. So obviously, I would agree with that 100%. We need to track it, and we need to push resources to the children that need it the most, that are most behind. And that was something brought up at the listening session. One of the things we're doing, and we've already presented it twice and we'll present it again, this board will present the academic scoring three times a year so that it's a public record. We're not where we want to be, per se, you know, but we need to be, have the ability to track it and see whether or not we're moving up or moving backwards, right? We need to be able to determine what students need the extra assistance, and we need to be able to provide that. And the only way we can do that is to track it. That's it. For me, student board member reports.
All right, thank you. I wanted to give, first of all, a shout out to our spring athletes. Our track, tennis, softball, baseball, and golf teams are all off to a great start. And also a congratulations to West Albany senior Tori Thorpe, who was given recognition as one of the top five high school journalists in the nation. So that's really exciting for her and for our whole Whirlwind program. The Whirlwind also received sixth place for a news magazine in schools of our size. So that was schools under 1,500 students, I believe. We've, we're really lucky to have just like such a great journalism program at West. And a lot of that is, can be attributed to Michelle Bolmeo, who is our journalism teacher, and she's just pretty awesome. So that is exciting for Bulldogs everywhere. Another congratulation is for the West Albany Wind Ensemble. Took first place at the League Band Festival, which West Albany hosted. And we will be competing at the State Festival in May. And then speaking of the performing arts, I was able to see Anastasia last week. There will also be performances on the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd at 7 o'clock, and then another performance on the 23rd at 1. It's a really great musical. You can just really tell how much work everyone put into it, from the cast, the crew, the pit orchestra. One of the cool things about West Albany musicals is that all of the music is performed live every night. And it used to be that we would have to wire in the pit orchestra from the band room into the cafeteria, but now we have a real pit orchestra, which is just so great. So if you're looking to check out some great performing arts, and I don't even just say like good high school performing arts, I guess it's just a fantastic performance. And I really encourage you to go check that out. We'll also be having the Drama Night coming up on the 20th, which is an opportunity for West Albany students and staff to go see a special performance of the play, which is really cool. It's a fun tradition that West Albany has, and the energy is just always really high. So that's exciting to have that tradition back. And another tradition that we've been able to revive recently is the pep assembly. We've recently had two full-school pep assemblies in our large gymnasium. And it's really fun to be able to have the whole school together for some chants, some songs, and some friendly class competitions. We'll also be having the school together for our old-school dance again and our junior, senior prom. So it's cool to see all those traditions coming back together and all the community coming back together with that. And then my last thing is that we will be having a celebration of academic excellence at West Albany on April 26 for our academic awards, which is at 7 o'clock. Our award-winning jazz band will be performing. There will also be a reception for the Scholastic Art Award winners at 6 o'clock. And so this is just a cool opportunity to recognize the students who have been working hard to complete their schoolwork at a really high level. And so that would be a good opportunity to support Greater Albany academics. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I really want to give props to the Anastasia. It was amazing. Our Albany Performing Center is really first-class. Our Albany Performing Center is really first class. The play is really good. I mean, it was amazing. I mean, they had ballet, they had everything going on. It was really impressive. So if you have some time, it's definitely worth your time. Also want to so want to prop that up. Also want to say congrats to Juan Garcia. Wasn't he like student of the month or something?
Oh.
And I know he had to go present before the Rotary had to give his speech, and he was all nervous about it, but he did it, and they really liked it, so that's great. Also want to Esperanza's not with us tonight, and she sent us something to be able to be read. Says, "Hello, members of the board. I apologize for not being able to attend, but something came up last minute, so here's my report. Middle school visit will start tomorrow. These are eighth graders, soon to be ninth graders. Brief overview of the day by Hunter, and then groups rotate, three sessions. ABC of high school with Ayers and Bussard, then a student panel that students can ask questions, and then go to forecasting for next year with Bennett and counselors, and then activities, clubs and sports fair with Winn and Doherty." So our eighth graders kind of get the opportunity to get excited about being high schoolers. I have a freshman, I can tell you he's very excited to be in high school, and my daughter, who's a seventh grader, wishes she was in high school. They then later get tours in their groups by South Albany High School students. We are also tentatively planning incoming ninth grade parent night on May 10. This night, students get to attend a 45-minute dance while parents get to meet the admin team and hear a bit about the school. Prom is this Saturday. Students are very excited and so thankful we are able to throw one this year. I know I can't wait to see everyone all dressed up. And lastly, some exciting news, avid news. South Albany High School has approximately 110 incoming ninth graders next year that are showing interest in being avid students next year at the high school. Interviews began today at the middle school. Avid has been a program that's done wonders for our district, so that's exciting that there's so many kids that want to participate. Okay, committee, community, and school presentations. We don't have any of those tonight, do we? Okay. Consent agenda. First up is personnel certified.
I move to approve the personnel certified as presented.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Personnel classified.
I move to approve the personnel classified as presented.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Regular board meeting minutes.
I move to accept the minutes as presented.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is school calendar. Heather going to speak, or are you going to speak to that?
Yeah, I'll speak to that. So as the board knows in the packet, there is a calendar that we brought forward for consideration, and it has been under consideration by the by the board and also other people who've had an opportunity to see it, and we have begun to get some feedback on that calendar with people indicating that they don't care for it particularly, in particularly. And yes, it's not the one that's up on the screen just yet, however, it's the one that's in the board packet, and I do think that there is some feedback particularly about fall conferences that is valid on that calendar and gives us some pause after getting the feedback, which is part of what putting something like that out is good for. I also know that I hear from people who say, "It's getting pretty late. Let's get this, you know, let's get this done so that we can be setting some things in place." I do know that at the last meeting, the board adopted winter break and spring break, which was important because if people are organizing time to be away or vacations and that kind of thing, that it gives them the opportunity to do that with a fair amount of knowledge. What you have up on the screen, both screens, is what, okay, so we've got the 31422 proposal. It is the one that has the odd conferencing, and if we go to the other one that says Option 1 in the upper corner, upper right-hand corner, and it's the one that's printed at your place, this is a much more traditional calendar for greater Albany public schools, and I'll take ownership of sort of looking at the previous one and not understanding what's been historically adopted by the board in Albany and what it appears that staff typically prefer. This calendar does get at that. It does change the fall conference dates and is a calendar that I think is very similar to that that was adopted this year and has typically been in previous years. Usually, I would say, why don't we put this up and review it and bring it forward to the next meeting, but in in recognition that it is very standard, very typical, and also in recognition that people are wanting to know, it's almost like adopt this just so we know, will you please? I would recommend that the board adopt this calendar, Option 1, as opposed to the one in the packet, and that you would do that this evening.
And this is the one sitting, or not sitting, it's the one on the screen right now.
It's the one on the screen, and it's the one at your place in hard copy.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the calendar, Option 1, as described and presented by Superintendent Saxton.
Discussion?
Yeah, just real quick, the teacher asked, I mean, it's not printed on here, but the last day of June 15th, she wanted to clarify, is that a half day for, I believe it is for everyone?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
We have a motion?
I made it.
I know. Can someone second it?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, members of the board, and my apologies for the confusion about that one.
Mr. Chairman, might I, I want to know when the proper time to address these cards is.
At any point in time that you see fit, sir.
Well, we've got a whole bunch of people who came here not to probably watch us pass the consent agenda. So so, and I value your time, and I value your work. So, Mr. Superintendent, tell us about the card, the issue, and what we can do about it.
Yeah.
Because I happen to agree with them.
Right. So the card first is really beautiful. Thank you for making it look so nice, and also for the time that people took to send those in and send a message. And I think really what these cards say is that there's plenty of opportunity for us to look at. I mean, it's obviously it's a it's an effort by the association to organize and say, "We have an issue here. We'd like you to address it. There's going to be some upcoming opportunity to do that. Would you please?" And it is what our compensation looks like. We want to have a living wage job. We think these are really important jobs. We work hard, some of the things that I said earlier, and we'd like you to know that. We obviously have sent you a stack of those. We'll get a count on that, and we are hopeful that you'll take that into consideration and as we enter into some future discussions that you'll know that we need to make a living wage.
So I get the card with with the knowledge that what they were making and what they could buy for that in September is today less than that, and we face a challenge across the board, but particularly at entry level where it's very difficult stuff. So you got a you got a plan to solve that?
I don't have a plan right now, but I do know that we get together and do some negotiation and talk about what's possible, and that there's plenty of opportunity around that, and that we'll need to compare, you know, what's it look like in the neighboring area, and how do we make sure that we send a message about both having a wage that makes sense and that retains people? We're in a time when, you know, retention and recruitment are a challenge, and having the right dollar amount does help with that. It's not everything, but it's a big piece of it. We also have different kinds of jobs in the district, some that pay more than others, and then we also have a pay scale. And so looking at that scale, making sure that it makes sense and that the gap between, you know, sort of what is minimum wage and where employees start has narrowed as the as two different things have happened, but especially as minimum wage has climbed. And so that gap is not what it needs to be. Taking that into consideration and making some sense out of that is going to be important, and sitting down and talking about what dollars we have available and the work that needs to get done is all part of that negotiation.
So so when when might those happen and conclude and everybody feel good about where we are going forward?
Right. Well, we always can have discussion, but our our contract, the contract that has been agreed to runs to the end of the 2223 calendar year, and so we would enter into negotiations over the course of, you know, any time from now, begin having some discussion about, you know, what's appropriate, but typically what happens is beginning those negotiations is early next fall and then trying to conclude them before the end of the next school year.
Having been out in the schools, what you all are doing is amazing. It's a lot of hard work. Your patience is amazing, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you for bringing the cards in. Thank you for being here and sharing with us your concerns, and hopefully we'll be able to get those addressed for you soon so we all feel good about going forward and taking care of our kids.
Well, this is just, it's, I echo comments of fellow board members. We appreciate you, the community appreciates you, the school appreciates you. We have an exercise in math coming up with the budget, and we need to figure out how we can do the best we can and invite you to continue to engage us in the process. Thank you for being here tonight.
Okay. J2, Board Policy, Section I. Description: The Policy Rewrite Committee has reviewed the majority of policies, administrative regulations in Section I, which is an Attachment 1. The remaining policies and administrative regulations, Attachment 2, are going to be finalized, will come to the board as soon as they leave the policy committee. Information about form location will be added to policy and/or administrative regulation at the end of the policy rewrite process when the footnotes are added by OSBA. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve Section I, policies as presented with form location added at the end of the policy rewrite process.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Curriculum adoption.
Vice Chair Morris, members of the board, I'd like to invite Stacy Lee. She is our curriculum coordinator. You heard from her last board meeting around the curriculum adoption for world language, English language development, and K8 language arts, so I will hand it over to Ms. Lee.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience with that. I am here tonight to ask for an action item this time for the three areas that we've been talking about the last two meetings for world languages, English language development, and language arts. Public comment opened on March 18th and was announced via Parent Square and an all-staff email. This has been open now for for four weeks, and so tonight I'm going to share with you what we learned from that public comment. There were reminders that went out to staff on a What to Know Wednesday email on March 30th, and then reminders went out to parents on April 1st and again on April 8th as part of the superintendent update. There are digital online resources were shared with everyone, and there were five open sessions to review the curriculum materials in person. Approximately 12 people came to an open session, and 13 people responded to the survey. For world languages, five people responded that they had reviewed the instructional materials. The survey included a rating scale for how each textbook series helps students develop language skills, promotes authentic and meaningful student-centered activities, fosters enjoyment of learning languages, and supports students' cultural learning. Two respondents rated the French option, Chemin, two, one did the German, Klasse, one for Mosaic, two for Senderos. So you can see that our numbers are rather small looking at the rating scales. The range of scores was three to five, and the most common score was a four. There was only one written comment under all of the options. It was written actually under the French option, and the question or comment was, "Why German instead of Chinese?" As you may know, we've offered German at South Albany High School for several years, and several of our students are currently in the German program. Of the 13 total respondents that we had, six people responded related to English language development. Their rating scale questions were about helping students develop language skills, helping students develop transferable skills to support content area learning like math, social studies, science, providing appropriate challenge and support for students at different English language proficiency levels, and recognizing and validating the assets diverse learners bring to our classroom. Reach Higher had three respondents, Connect had three respondents, Impact had five respondents, only four of whom completed the rating scale, and Life had one respondent and Pathways had one respondent. The scores ranged from three to five again, and the mode or most common was four. This time, we had three comments. Two wrote that they did not see any issues, but they wanted assurance that materials are not part of a political agenda and all perspectives are shared. One wrote CRT enough said. The English language development instructional materials are for teaching students who are learning another lang- who learned another language first and continue to need support in developing proficiency in English. These curriculum options are not intended to be politically provocative, and like the first respondents, we saw no evidence of that being the case. I don't have enough information to know what the last respondent meant by CRT, and they did not provide any scaled scores, only this comment. We have no evidence of critical race theory in any of these titles. For language arts, we had 10 people respond. Five had reviewed the elementary and five the middle school, so I'll deal with those each separately. The scale was very similar for the prompts for the scale were very similar between K5 and 68. They asked about how it helps students develop critical skills in reading, writing, speaking, and listening, how it uses rigorous and culturally diverse texts that are accessible to all students, how it promotes meaningful student conversations around relevant, engaging topics and texts, and how it fosters an enjoyment of reading. For elementary, there was also a question about how it supports strong foundational or early literacy skills instruction. The five people that responded to the K5 prompts, two said that they had reviewed both Intu Reading and the Spanish version, Arriba la Actora, and three said they had only reviewed Intu Reading. One respondent scored it lower than the other, so you'll see the score range was one to five. That was one of the respondents that scored below a three. That person seemed most concerned, they wrote in their written comment, that the new curriculum lacks strong connections to science and social studies present in the current Ready Gen curriculum. Another respondent said that they were pleased to see that CRT was not present and asked that we continue to, quote, "search and use curriculum that is diverse and responsibly discusses current day issues without classifying or grouping students into oppressor or oppressee." If you'll remember at our last board meeting, teachers on a curriculum adoption team expressed praise for the curriculum's connection to science and social studies. Each module in Intu Reading has a designated cross-curricular connection. For instance, third grade has a model, a module called Let Freedom Ring with the essential question, "How do historic places, documents, and symbols represent our nation?" For instance, third grade has a model, a module called Let Freedom Ring with the essential question, how do historic places, documents, and symbols represent our nation? The text sets for this unit are connected to American landmarks and the U.S. Constitution. There will be work to do related to science and social studies standards alignment, but that would be true of any language arts curriculum. Our district social studies program assistant has been following this adoption closely and will begin laying the groundwork this spring. As I said, five people reviewed the middle school option, Into Literature. The rating scale here, the range was three to five, and the mode was four again. This time there were four written comments. One suggested a student survey with questions that include student engagement, likes and dislikes about the new curriculum. This is something we expect to do. There are similar student feedback opportunities already built into the curriculum, which we are eager to explore. Another respondent said, "I don't have time to go through these texts in depth. What I will say is that when I see the materials being presented are rooted in CRT, I do not want my children exposed to it. There are better, more inclusive ways to address diversity in education when something as divisive as CRT-based learning." We struggled to find what this person might be referencing. In our digital materials, we shared information from the publishers about their approach to culturally responsive teaching. In this short video, the publisher states, the quote, "Our ultimate goal is to create cultural democracies in our classrooms where students are continually interacting with a wide range of backgrounds, experiences, and realities, and where every student feels respected, important, and proud." The publishers make no claim of teaching critical race theory, and we found no evidence of critical race theory being taught. Two respondents praised the mix of contemporary and classic texts. One of them praised the integration of writing and reading. The other spoke about the extensive online resources and said, quote, "Thank you for the thorough review by the district. I can see a lot of work went into the curriculum review and that it was a very thorough process. I feel confident in the district team's decision and will hopefully see how the teachers incorporate it with my middle schooler in future years." So my takeaways from this, I see a need for transparency. We had five of 13 comments referring to political agendas or to critical race theory. And so I think ongoing conversations in our community are happening, even though this is a small number of people. It just reinforces that need for people to see what's available and have that transparency. It shows importance being placed on those social studies connections, especially for elementary language arts. So both meeting those standards and teaching multiple perspectives in a thoughtful, age-appropriate way. And this opportunities for student feedback during implementation, it was suggested specifically under middle school language arts, but it's something I hope to incorporate for all of our titles. So what we're asking tonight is to go forward with approving the adoption in these three areas. So as a reminder, for world languages, we're looking at adoption that would last through spring 2027. This is considered an independent adoption because these titles were not on the state-approved list. Senderos was for Spanish, but it was an earlier addition. We're asking for the 2023 adoption. And the quote price here is $187,230.40. For English language development, the adoption will actually last for seven years through spring 2029. And earlier copies we had talked about, Connect, but Reach Higher is what the committee is, is recommending. So we were recommending K five, Reach Higher, six, eight, Impact, and nine, 12, Pathways. These are all from Cengage, which is part of National Geographic. The quote is for $130,788, seven, sorry, $130,788.57. I still think I messed that up a little bit. For language arts, we're looking at Hooten, Mufflin, Harcourt's, Into Reading, and Arriba la Lectura for K five, six through eight, Into Literature. As a reminder, Arriba la Lectura will just be used at our dual-language school along with Into Reading. The quote is for $1,781,781,000. No, I did that wrong. You did it right. $342.11. Thank you. Through spring 2028. Any questions?
Just, thank you. Great job. A great process. The, the money is staggering to me. Is there, is there a lack of competition in the marketplace for textbooks or superintendent, how's this happen? What's, what's the per book price? Just in general of these books we're buying?
It's approximately, per student, it ranges, the ELD adoption is just over $20 per student. For language arts, it's closer to $43 per student.
I, I mean, I hate to say that that's the price of textbooks, but it is. And if I, if I went to a, I mean, you sort of never get to look at that until you go to a, a college bookstore and decide you need to purchase a text, right? And you go, oh, what is that?
There's something wrong there too.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that there isn't. I, I actually think there's some big markup there, right? We're not doing that, but, but they are expensive, but also really central to the work that we do. Having these textbooks, especially in English language arts and, you know, basically reading for all of this and language are really central to the work that we do, and it's, it's one of the tools that we use to get our work done.
Well, it's, it's hard because we're, we're all about trying to get money to the classroom, right? And a textbook would qualify as doing that. It just.
Especially for language arts, I just say that there's a lot included in the language arts package. And so you're looking at not just a textbook, but you're looking at all the digital resources and resources for, multiple resources for reading and writing that can be both push, that, it takes about two hours a day of language arts. It's over 90 minutes, not including any intervention materials that we do for reading and writing. So the, the impact on students and the number of materials available to teachers is, is large. The quote is big, but it also is 6,500 students that will be impacted by this.
All right. I'll, I'll vote for it, but I won't like it.
I just wanted to say thanks again. I was really impressed last meeting when you brought the teachers that served on the committees and they went through what they were looking for and their process and their educational expertise. I was super impressed. And I said, thank you then, but I just wanted to emphasize how impressed I was, how thorough they were, and how thorough this whole process has been. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I meant to also thank our, we have some people in the audience today that were helping with things. So Laura Jacobsma-Obdal, who helped me throughout the language arts adoption, has been pivotal to that. And then Bonnie Dietrich and Jessica Dion, who led the English Language Development Group, are both here. We have a couple of our team members here today, Emily Harbin and Elizabeth Maori, and several others that are watching online.
Thank you for all the work.
Yeah. Thanks for spending two and a half hours with me and, and being so patient and getting me through all the, all the books. I started kindergarten and went all the way through the, the ninth grade and, or eighth grade and, and you were very patient and helped me through it. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciated you taking your time.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the curriculum adoption for world languages as presented by staff.
All second.
All approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Any disapprove?
I, I move to approve the curriculum adoption for English language development as presented by staff.
I second that.
Approvals? Aye.
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 Any disapprovals?
I move to approve the curriculum adoption for K through eight language arts as presented by staff.
I second that.
Approvals?
Aye.
Disapprovals? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list, J four, Demographer Report. Mr. Saxton.
Yes. So we will have a report from our demographer this evening. We're gonna have the bravery to make that into a presentation online here. And so hopefully that will come through smoothly. And, you know, the, the need to have a demographer do a report is really pretty important for a whole bunch of different considerations. One of them for us is just being able to understand what our budget ought to look like. Especially right now, having more sets of eyes and really experienced, you know, professionals look at what, what numbers of students we ought to expect to be in our schools next year is, is super important. We've, there's been a lot of variability and, you know, what happens with COVID and, and students learning online, and you see a, a number of districts around the state shrinking significantly. We're going to project that we're going to be bigger next year than we are this year. And you're gonna, you're gonna hear a little bit about that from Flow Analytics tonight. And so how many students come impacts our budget significantly because we get paid on a per student basis from the state, from the state, through the state school fund. It also is highly impactful on decisions that we make about long-term our facilities. We, you know, we are just finishing up bond projects from the previous bond that was passed by the community, and we're very, very thankful for that. I see members of the group that supported that in our audience tonight, and then also folks who were on the Oversight Committee and just really appreciate their work. Dave McKay and others from HMK, people who've been engaged in that. But knowing what's going to happen growth-wise across our district is, will help us make good decisions moving forward. These are huge budget decisions when we talk about facilities. And so having a good demographer report around that is important. And if we can get things done by a school, on a school-by-school basis, it helps us understand what's likely to happen over time, if we need to adjust boundaries, and so on. So with all of that being said, I will move this forward to Jerry Ulrich. I won't say that last name exactly right, Jerry, but I'll hand it over to you.
Great. Thank you Superintendent Saxton. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, as Superintendent mentioned, I'm Jerry Ulrich. I'm a senior demographer and data analyst with Flow Analytics, and we're based out of Portland. And we do, we're just kind of a demographic consulting firm that, we do a lot of work for school districts. They're the majority of our, more, majority of our work, doing student enrollment forecasting and also boundary update processes. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and start sharing the presentation that I've put together. But I just want to say beforehand that I'm going to try to, I'll do my best to try to speak quickly. But if you have questions on anything, feel free to interrupt me, or if you want me to add more detail, I can do that. There will be a full report that we'll be sharing in the next probably couple of weeks here that will have everything shown here as well as additional supporting information. So there's a lot of, a lot of numbers in here, and I'll, I'll try to just focus on the highlights. Go ahead and share my screen. All right. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
I can actually see it in, in the video. Great. So a little bit about our process is that, there was a little pop-up thing. It was distracting me. We, the first thing that we do is what we call student enrollment assessment, where we just try to get the lay of the land with existing student enrollment and, you know, the population living in the district and school-aged children. Look at historical enrollment trends, and I'll, I'll talk more about kind of each of these. And then the second major part of our analysis is what we call demographic and land use analysis. And that, a lot of that is around trying to figure out what might happen with residential construction and continued population and housing growth throughout the district. And our forecasts are for a 10-year horizon, but we, we have numbers for each year. So that's really looking out the next 10 years. And then we kind of bring those two things together and develop the, the forecasts of enrollment by, by school and district-wide. As I'm sure you're all familiar, this is just a map of, map of the district showing the different elementary, elementary school attendance areas as well as middle and high. They're kind of hard to see. I'm sure it's, they're very small on your screen, but just trying to highlight that everything we do is rooted in, in location. And so we, we map all the students to, to the residences at which they live and look at things like, you know, for, for different neighborhoods and attendance areas within the district, the number of students per, per household and things like that to help us understand what we might expect with future development and where that development might be. And I have more information on what, what we know for development, that I'll share in a bit. We prepare two different types of enrollment forecasts, and these will both be present in our final report. The one that we're going to focus on today is what we call building program attendance, since that would be the number of students that we actually expect to attend each, each school. And we use October 1st as, as kind of our, I guess, the, the timestamp for, for what we're forecasting for. And that accounts for out-of-district students as well as kind of locations of special programs and different things that might cause students to go to different school besides their, you know, their assigned neighborhood school by, by their attendance area. The other type of forecast that we do, which I'm not going to focus on today, is what we call residence-based. And that is just looking at the number of district students expected to reside within a certain geographic area, whether it be the whole district or individual attendance areas. And so those are forecasts that, that, those particular forecasts don't look at, you know, how students might, might transfer between schools and, and the students coming in from out of district. We, the reason, one of the reasons why we provide these is they're kind of a foundational piece for the building program attendance forecast because we can kind of, the residence-based ones are more deeply rooted than what we see with warehousing development is happening and what kind of demographic patterns are happening in different neighborhoods. And then the way that we sort of convert then those residence-based forecasts to the building attendance ones is by, I, I could show y'all. I've, I've showed them to Superintendent Saxton and also to, to Case and other staff. But we have these, what we call these residence attendance matrices that are kind of these giant tables that show for elementary and middle and high school. I didn't want to try to talk through those in this, in this meeting here because it would take me too long, but they'll be in our report. But it kind of, it just shows the number of students tabulated by, you know, elementary or K through five students that, that live in a particular attendance area, and then how many of them attend each of the schools in the, in the district. And certainly the majority would be their, you know, the neighborhood school associated with that attendance area. But then, you know, for various reasons, there's transfers to other schools. So that, those matrices and, and kind of the distribution of how students move throughout the district and then numbers of students coming in from out of district, all of that is baked into our forecasts. That's all I'm going to say for, for now. There's more detail on it in the report. If you're interested, this is kind of a high-level summary that just shows both, you know, for K through five, six through eight, and then high school, nine through 12, and then district-wide. It shows the total enrollment from students residing within the district and then students coming in from out of district, and then the total. And then you can see the, the intra, intra-district transfers is the number that are, that are, that live within the district but are attending the school different than their attendance area of school. So you can see, for example, for elementary, that's 916 students, which is about 23.6%. And these, all these kind of intra-district transfer rates are pretty, pretty normal from our perspective. Just trying to let you know that, that that is taken into account because it's, it's one of the kind of complicated variables of forecasting student enrollment. This is just a quick, by, by school year, again, October 1st, and by grade, looking at the last, this is the last six years of, of enrollment. And, you know, from 2016, October 2016 to October 2021. And the orange would be the highest numbers for each grade during that timeframe, and then the blue is the lows. And what, what you really see here, certainly as, as you're all aware, I'm sure, is that there was a substantial enrollment decline in October, going from 2019 to 2020 because of, because of COVID. And that's certainly something that is standard across pretty much, I think, all school districts throughout the state and, and the Northwest for, for the most part. It is the case that, that gaps then, you know, fortunately enrollment did, did stabilize and actually went up some going from October 20- and actually went up some going from October 2020 to 2021. We actually thought, we didn't do forecasts for the, for the district last year, but we had thought and a lot of demographers and I think school districts had thought before October 2021 that there would be a larger return of, you know, this 400-plus students that were lost. But it just hasn't really happened in, in most places. It seems that a lot of those students have continued on alternative tracks such as like homeschooling or maybe private school or kind of community schools that, that are outside of the district. But this is all to say that we, we look very closely at, at what has happened the last several years. And, and also something that we'll look at later is patterns and how the different grades roll up across time. Because that's also part of our forecasting work. There's a lot of other stuff that we also look at for what we call that student enrollment assessment. But I'm just trying to share some of the highlights. Kind of speaking to our analysis of what we expect to happen going forward with population and housing. We look at a number of different data sources. We, we look at some statewide sources and, and also county and municipal planning departments. We did talk with, talked with planners from the city of Albany, city of Millersburg. We didn't get a chance to connect with city of Tangeon, but we were able to pull some information from their website. We also talked to Benton County, which told us about the unincorporated areas of, of the county that are within the district. And there's not, not a whole lot happening there. But, but we did talk with them. We didn't get a chance to connect with, with Lynn County. But that's mostly just, you know, a, a small bit of the area around North Albany that's, that's not incorporated into the city of Albany. So we, you know, th- this is an area where we put a lot of, a lot of focuses trying to glean as much knowledge as we can from planners. And, and you know, they're, they're the ones that kind of know the area the best and have been analyzing trends with, with housing. And they're the ones that, you know, approve plans for new, for new residential projects. So they were very helpful, very valuable. And oops. This kind of summarizes a lot, a lot of the information that we got from, from the planners and also from kind of other sources and, and our own sort of estimation and speculation about what might happen with housing. And I know that you probably can't see this map extremely well, but I'll try to highlight some areas. What this is showing is the, the dash line is the district boundary. And then all of these yellow dots with labels, those labels are not numbers of houses. They're, they're just labels that correspond to kind of a larger table with more information about each development that would be in our report. But this shows kind of the, the larger yellow circles, which are again, are probably harder to see or where, where we got information about kind of larger numbers of single-family housing developments. So you can see there's some, some larger dots up here in Millersburg. A lot of that is not, not like big subdivisions, just a lot of different, a lot of different individual permits. There are some more, there's some subdivisions that have been permitted and I don't have the names off the top of my head. But some of the larger ones would be in the East Albany area, not far from, from like Timber Ridge and Meadow Ridge schools. As I'm sure you're all for aware, that's kind of, you know, one of the areas that's been experiencing the largest amount of housing development. So we, there's more, more of that coming. And then there's also some, some of the larger developments where annexations that recently, actually I believe they haven't occurred yet. I, I think they're annexations that have been, where there's applications for them that are down in South Albany here off of, I think it's Ellingson Road, or I might've, might've said that wrong, but not, not far from the Community College. And then there's a lot, a lot of other kind of smaller developments scattered throughout the district. But you know, since a lot of, since a lot of Albany is more built out, a, a lot of those are just kind of infill projects and things like that. I'm going to stop rambling on that slide because I know that you, you all have a lot to talk about. So I'm trying to move quickly here. But again, if you, if you have questions, feel free to interrupt me. This is just trying to show you kind of a snapshot of the level of detail that we'll have in our full report and the wet end of the now, into the analysis. So there will be a, a table. This is just a snapshot of it that shows a, a sampling of those labels from the map. And the kind of the multifamily and then the yellow single-family projects with numbers of units. And then the number that we expect to go in, in the next five years. And then the five-year period after that, since again, we're doing 10-year forecasts. We kind of break it up into the first five and second five years. So that will, that will all be available in the report. And some summary statistics on all of this residential development, which I, I guess one thing that I didn't mention on, on here is that as you, if you were looking very closely at this, you might've seen that there's what we call speculative units by census blocker. And so those are, it really just means that we've speculated that there will be a lot of development in and around Millersburg, in, in Millersburg. And kind of the second half of our forecast range that is just stuff that's not permitted yet. But based on our conversation with the planner there and what we see having happened there, we, we expect there to be more beyond what's been permitted. Then a lot of that kind of speculative development also occurs in this small area of East Albany here, where there's a lot of projects on the books right now. There's been a lot going on. And we just expect there to be more that just hasn't been permitted yet. And then some, a little bit down in and around Tangeon and kind of other areas. So some summary statistics and that purple turned into gray here. But if you look at a single family, we have actionable information from the planners in terms of permits and proposed projects for about a thousand single-family units in the next five years. And then a little over 700 multifamily units. And then we've kind of, based on housing demand and whatnot, we, we expect there to be, maybe be an additional 200 or so housing units on, on top of those. But we just, we don't know for sure whether there'll be single-family or multifamily. This is all throughout the district. I think about 85% of that, almost 2,000 units would be in the city of Albany. And then Millersburg, I think is around 250 or so units, almost the, the rest of it. But then kind of some scattered development and, and Tangeon and, and incorporated county areas. And then we have a similar, we've assumed a similar, although slightly higher amount of development happening in the second half of the forecast horizon and more of that is speculative on our end, just meaning that again, permits haven't been filed yet. So that's just based off what we think is going to happen if, if, you know, growth in housing continues. And I'll also share in just a second here, might be the something, I think it's the next slide that, or the one after that that shows the student yields that we assumed for, for those new housing units and talk a little bit about that. And if I'm giving too much detail, feel free to just tell me to go faster. But in terms of source data for the forecast that we prepared, certainly we got enrollment data from, from gaps, from the district. And also had several conversations just to make sure that we understood what was happening with kind of specific nuances of the enrollment data and whatnot. So Case and Rob are extremely helpful to, to that end. And we also, we have birth data from the Oregon Health Authority by zip code that we'll look at in a little bit. That's an important part of our forecasting process. We also used July 1st population estimates for, you know, for, for the cities and the counties from the Portland State University Population Research Center. And also use their county population forecasts, which played into how we forecasted births for years that we don't know yet. And birth to kindergarten conversion is an important part of our forecasts. And then data from the Census and American Community Survey. Our forecasting methods, we kind of have a hybrid, hybrid model that we use that part of it is what we call a grade progression model that really just looks at enrollment patterns over time. So how, how, you know, grades kind of, how the grades roll up over time? Like how many first graders there are when a kindergarten class, you know, material turns into first grade that, that next fall and kind of things like that, which I have a, a chart that speaks to that a little bit. So that's, that's really important. And then also just trying to understand what's happening with, with population and population of school-aged children. We use what's called a cohort component model that looks at births and deaths and also in-migration or families moving into the district and out-migration or families moving out. And there, there's a net in, in migration of, of families moving into, to the district. And a lot of that is driven by residential housing development. So that's why, that's one of the reasons why we focus a lot of attention on what we expect to happen with, with housing development. And the way, one of the ways that that happens is that sometimes these are called student generation rates. Sometimes it's referred to as student yields from new housing. But it's an, an important part of our analysis. These are the kind of overall rates that we used for a single-family for all of the developments that we looked at. So the overall average rate was about point four two K through 12 students per single-family unit, whether it was detached or, or attached, townhomes and duplexes. That rate varied by projects depending on what the demographics of those neighborhoods are. Like how many students there are per household kind of already with, with existing student enrollment and housing inventory, as well as any information we got from planners about whether it was, for example, like single-family detached or attached housing or the size of the household. So kind of looked at a variety of different things. And then for multifamily, that's a little bit harder to pin down. But we did, we did look closely at some of the larger apartment complexes in the district to kind of see how many students there are right now per, per unit and those, some of the newer ones. We also like the bedroom count breakdown for complexes is a really important factor. So any information we got on whether, you know, the number of units that were one-bedroom versus two-plus bedrooms is important. So that, that is something that I can speak about more if you have questions. But we put a lot of rigor into how we came up with those rates and how we applied them. Trying to keep moving along here. As I mentioned, looking at the conversion of births to mothers residing within the, the district. Because we have that, we have the birth data by zip code from the Oregon Health Authority. So we have what the shows here is district births known from 2012 through 2020. And then our forecasts for 2021 and on. And our forecasts are largely driven by the Portland State University's, the Population Research Center's forecast of the population of women of childbearing age, which is defined by them as age 15 to 44 going out into the future. So they have forecasts by five-year interval. And we kind of use that in conjunction with what we think is going to happen with fertility rates, which have been declining. And came up with forecasts of, of future births. And then also shown here is the kindergarten enrollments known through 2021, of course, which are kind of lined up with the births five years prior, since that's, you know, since kindergartners are usually five, five years old. There's a little bit of a disconnect because of, this is normal calendar year and then this is based off of the school year calendar. But overall, it's something that is really helpful for us to look at. So some of the things that you would see here are kind of before the, before October 2020 happened, which, you know, was a significant drop in kindergarten enrollment. It, it was the case that if you looked at these years here, the conversion of births to kindergarten five years later was, was usually consistently above 90%. And then it was below 70% in 2020, which is an anomaly. And there's been some recovery. The, you know, kindergarten class size this year was 643. So it did rebound some, but not, not as high as, for example, as 2019. But we, we kind of, what we've forecasted here is that things will kind of rebound back to what we would call, consider like a normal or more pre-pandemic conversion of births to kindergarten. And we do think that's going to happen because the, there was a large, large move in that direction going from October 2020 to 2021. And so we expect that to sort of continue to kind of taper back up to a normal level. And so what we do is just apply those K percent of birth rates that we're forecasting to the, at first here. It's known birth numbers through 2020 and then our forecast birth numbers to get our kindergarten forecasts. And one, one thing that's kind of funky when you look at this is that in, in a lot of places, in, in most places throughout the Northwest and the country, births have declined since 2014. This kind of large, oops, this large number of births in 2018 is anomalous. And we expect that to yield a rather large kindergarten class size in 2023. But then things would fall back to kind of more normal numbers. I'm not going to talk a ton about this slide because I want to try to get to the more important numbers. And I think I'm picking a little bit more time than I wanted to point things out. But this is really what this is trying to capture is that we, we look at those, those grade rollups and look at the patterns in those rollups over, over the last several years. And then we develop a set of kind of numbers to assume for the forecast years. And things were very strange in October 2020 because a lot of students were lost. And some of those came back in 2021, making some of these numbers like, you know, there was, there were a lot of first graders in 2021 compared to kindergartners in 2020. But there's still, so there's kind of some, some, you know, funky trends going on the past couple of years. And so we, similar to that kind of birth to kindergarten conversion metric, we consider it reason, most reasonable to assume that things will continue to kind of go back to pre-pandemic, I guess, ways in which the, in which grades roll up. So not, not losing large numbers of students or not, not having very large increases, such as the, the last K to first rollup. So these are the overall averages we assume for the forecast years. So all that builds up to our, this, the highest level forecast, which is the total district-wide headcount. And this includes, for example, those kindergarten forecasts and then applying our grade progression ratios. How we come up with the district-wide, what we call medium-growth scenario, which is what we think is the most likely scenario of, of enrollment. So what Superintendent Saxton was talking about, trying to anticipate what you might expect next year. And then in, in the future, over the next 10 years, we, we are forecasting with all of those things kind of coming together. We're forecasting growth through 2023. So the next couple of years, we would be seeing growth. And then we're forecasting things kind of stabilize a little bit. And then they go down a little bit. And the next slide, I'll make it more clear, but that's partly because there's kind of a large bubble moving through the high school grades right now. And that's going to be, that's going to start exiting the, the system and then kind of be fully out by around this, by around 2027. But then we expect things to continue to climb back up. And I, I would say my, my knowledge of, so this is about a 5.5% enrollment increase over the 10-year time period. And I guess getting back up to close to the 2016 levels by, by the end of that time period. But it's my, my understanding from reports that I've seen for other school districts in the state, speaking most specifically about the two largest ones, Portland Public Schools and Salem Kaiser. It's my understanding that the forecasts for those two districts are currently of declining enrollment. So this, you know, there's a large decline because of pandemic. And this shows, you know, that the, the road to kind of recovery and numbers is, is a longer road than what we might've, what we might've, would have expected if we had done forecasts for you before October 2021. And a lot of those kids didn't come back. But this, this is, I think, this is a better scenario than what is happening in some of the large urban districts. And so just keep that in mind. Looking at things more, kind of a little bit more granularly that, oh, and I guess I would just say really quick that we also include a high, which is this red line, and then a low, which is this blue line forecast, which is just kind of what you might expect if birth rates really start to pick back up. And maybe there's, you know, just we move into a very strong economy and, you know, things are growing really well. That, we might see something more like the red line. Or if we slip into, you know, a significant Or if we slip into, you know, a significant recession or something like that, or birth rates continue to go down more than what we're expecting and imputed in these forecasts, then you might see something like this low scenario. But we think the orange line is the most likely. And for elementary school, elementary was the grade group that was hit hardest by the pandemic. You can see this drop here of, you know, there was about 400 students, um, from 19 to 20, and then it recovered some in 2021. So we're kind of just expecting continued gradual re- recovery there. High school, a lot of what's happening here is, as I mentioned before, there's kind of this large bubble of cohorts. There were ones that were kind of the larger, uh, birth cohorts from before the 2008 financial crisis that are kind of working their way through, um, through high school right now. And once, once they're out, then things kind of go down some and stabilize a little bit. And then, um, so this is about a 12% growth for elementary. It's about a 2% decline for high school. And then I think this is about a 4% increase for middle school, which is always a little bit more volatile because it's only three grades, I mean, it's in the middle. This is those same numbers broken out by grade by year, but I'm not going to talk about this in super great detail since I just kind of talked about again. Uh, we're forecasting about a five and a half percent district wide increase enrollment over the next 10 years. A little bit of a decline for high school, about a 4% increase for middle school and then almost a 12% increase for elementary. And you can just kind of see the, the larger, um, sizes of cohorts are kind of the darker red on here and then the, the white is kind of the smaller ones. So you can see there's some small ones right now that, um, that are kind of the result of the pandemic. Like, yeah, some, some of the students that were lost in 2020, some of them came back in 2021, but a lot of them didn't. And we're kind of assuming that for the most part, those students, the majority will kind of continue on whatever alternative track they're on, but things might get back to more normal kindergarten levels kind of as we move forward here. So we've kind of got, we're sort of forecasting that those kind of strongly affected by the pandemic cohorts, you know, will kind of be small, relatively small compared to other ones, uh, just as they kind of work, work their way through, uh, through K through 12, um, over the next several years. That's what all indications are telling us right now, but it is also difficult to forecast. And then I'm almost at 30 minutes, so I don't want to, I just want to highlight that for, um, for elementary forecasts, uh, this is, the numbers broken out by schools. So we're expecting the strongest growth, uh, for Meadow Ridge and Timber Ridge. We're also expecting somewhat significant growth for Tangent, which is affected by those annexations in South Albany. And then growth for a lot of the other schools, partly also because the remote constructional model, RIM. Just for simplicity, we assumed in our forecast that, that those students would return to their kind of home schools, uh, next year. So part of the increase is also just those, uh, uh, that you see for individual schools is, is those students returning to, to their home schools, um, which is just, that's what we assume for the forecasts. I don't know for sure if that's what will happen. And then middle school, um, we expected the largest, the largest growth also in Timber Ridge, uh, probably not surprisingly, um, to anyone, you know, who's kind of tracking how much, how much new housing is coming into East Albany, east of I-5. And then for high school, uh, not as drastic of, of changes, but we are forecasting an increase for South Albany of almost 100 students. And then West Albany, uh, you know, declined about 150. And I believe that is, that is all that I have, but I'm very, um, happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your patience.
Go ahead if you have a question.
I, I have questions. Superintendent Saxon, help me here if I'm out of bounds or you need to throw a penalty flag on, uh, what's pertinent and what's not. So the projections, uh, do those assume that the school district boundaries stay the same?
They do.
Yes, yes. Yes, they do.
So, so all of our boundaries are bound by other districts and, and, uh, the only way that a school district boundary changes typically in Oregon is for both districts to agree that they want to and both boards to agree. There are some other mechanisms to do that, but it requires a vote of the populace.
Kind of like changing the boundary of a county or a state. But that, that's not the int- the question I intended.
Okay.
The, the schools themselves have attendance boundaries. And do these projections assume that those attendance boundaries stay the same?
Yes, they do. They don't have to. Within, within our district, we can move those, but they assume that for 10 years right now.
Okay. What, uh, what's the margin of error in these projections?
Um, so for the district wide number, I'm just trying to skip to that. For the district wide number, uh, we expect our, um, margin of error to be around 2% for the five year mark, which would be, you know, uh, probably like 150 to 175 students either way. And then we expect it to be a little bit higher for the, for the 10 year mark.
Okay.
The margin of errors go up for like individual grades or individual schools, things like that.
And that's your past experience doing a, a whole bunch of these in a whole bunch of places, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And so you, uh, you don't treat, uh, the COVID related enrollment in a way that has that bouncing back in the next couple of years. It's, that's our new baseline, if you will, the number that we're at now?
Yes, we assumed that about, uh, around 25% of the students that were lost to COVID, uh, right here, that about 25% of those would kind of filter back in over the next few years. But for the most part, yes, kind of a new baseline, new normal.
Okay, so the, um, this is my last question, I hope. You all hope too, probably. So when you met with the, uh, planners in Albany or aside from that, have you considered the, the new state land use laws that for all intents and purposes eliminates single family zoning? So in many cases, for example, uh, in, in Albany on Gary Street, just, just north of 34, there was a home in the city, uh, right on Gary, must've been close to an acre, maybe an acre, that, that, the home's gone and they're putting apartments up, even though it's not, I shouldn't say that, they haven't started building. I don't know it's apartments, but I, I'm, I'm confident it's a multi-housing unit that's not zoned to be that. Have you considered that? I'm not sure. This is all a new experience for all of us. I'm, I'm not sure how that skews things, but is that, did you factor that in?
Yes. That's, it's, it's a very good point. It's my understanding that over the last 10 years, at least for the city of Albany, about, I think it's 60% of development, 60% of units have been single family detached housing and then about 30% have been multifamily. And then like the other 10% are like, you know, duplexes, townhomes, things like that. But the, that really started to shift heavily in the direction of, um, multifamily, uh, being a higher percentage towards the end of that timeframe. And so, um, I, I think, I, I don't, the percentages here, we, we do have higher percentages here, for example, of a multifamily versus single family than, than that. And a lot of this is driven by Albany. So we're kind of trending in that direction. I, I would say that, uh, the, the way that we did our forecast for the second half, for the second five year period where a lot of, a lot of the housing that we assumed was what we call this speculative category, we, we sort of assumed that, uh, that the yields for that housing would be kind of in between what we expect for single family, multifamily, but kind of leaning a little bit more towards multifamily because that does seem to be, that does seem to be the trend. So we did, I would say that we did account for that, that it's, it's not like it's s- single family stopping everywhere, but it's definitely shifting to higher distribution being multifamily. And we assumed that.
Thank you. Well done.
Yeah, thank you. And all of these single family that are shown here, those are ones with actionable permits, permits right now and planned projects. So we expect those to happen, but continue to be probably higher percentages of multifamily.
Lots of information here. The big takeaways that I take away from it is the, the growth is occurring where we all know the growth is occurring up near Millersburg and, and south portion of town, a little bit of east. So obviously that's something that we as planners need to take into effect about possible new schools and boundaries and things like that.
So just real world, I mean, I, I, one of the things I think is really important for us to understand is that, um, flow analytics is, you know, highly, highly qualified and does really great work and they're not playing, right? So we look at the numbers and there's a lot of data that you don't see. But just a real world example of how this impacts decision-making. Uh, we've been looking at elementary enrollment specifically and the, one of the biggest outliers for us is to always accurately predict kindergarten enrollment. It's really hard to do, uh, for us, but one of the things that they have are live births within certain areas and they're able to make some projections about the numbers of kindergartens that are likely to show up at each one of our elementary schools, way better than what we might be able to do that. And we sat down and looked at, um, what we thought kindergarten enrollment would be before receiving this information and thought we could probably reduce two, three, um, kindergarten teachers going forward next year. As a result of this information, on a school by school basis, we went through and realized that that was not the case. And so we won't be bringing that forward in our budget, um, predictions as we move forward next year. We added those FTE back, I think with the, with the exception of one school. And, um, and it was really valuable for us to look at it that way. And it's, you know, all we can do is take the very best information that we have and make good decisions. But having that information, had we decided that we were going to cut some FTE, um, and I think about, uh, you know, should these numbers turn out to be accurate? And again, there's some variability in that. The heartache that we'll save because we have good numbers and because we're able to make better decisions is incredibly, um, important and has a huge impact on how our kindergartners get to show up and start their first year of school, uh, in our, in our schools and the experience that they'll have there and then our families will have as a, as a part of that. And so feel good about having the information and using it to make the best, uh, informed decisions that we possibly can. Just one real world example of that.
Yeah, you, I was going to say, but you gave a real world example of that. I kept looking at these numbers and they're expressed in numbers of students, but for us, especially in the K through five area, we have made a commitment to keeping class sizes. And so we have to think in terms of, uh, numbers of class, classrooms, um, beyond total numbers of students. And that just makes even more of a challenge for us as you, as you just gave a real world example from.
Another thing I see on there is that RIM's going away, the remote learning, you know? So I, I know I got sent that to Parents Square. You know, I, I just get that message out to everybody, you know? There's not a whole bunch of students on that, but there are some students who stayed on that when we came out of, uh, COVID to have in-session school or in-classroom school. Another thing that I think is real positive that comes out from this and he talked to it is, uh, we're getting a lot more of our children back in our schools in comparison to some of our bigger, bigger cities. And, uh, hopefully we can continue to do that. You know, I, I think remote learning is good for some, but not the majority. You know, the majority gain most by having those social interactions with their teachers, their coaches, their staff and with their fellow students. You know, there are some who, uh, zooming in is the best thing for them, but that is not the majority. Any other comments? Roger?
Uh, I have one more question.
Uh-oh.
Two more questions. So, so at what point, uh, do you refresh? One, I think this is well worth the money and the time we spent on it. I'm glad that we did this and thank you for doing it. And it, it should be a great tool. When can we go out and refresh this?
Because of the high level of variability, I think, in what's going to happen after COVID. So, you know, oftentimes you'll hear, um, people like Jerry say, look, we have a high level of confidence in the first five years and then it becomes a little more sketchy. And they don't ever say it that way exactly, right? But I do. And, and so, um, that's an important consideration. The other thing, this particular report, unlike most other demographic reports that I've seen, has a higher level of variability in, in next year and the following year. Usually it's incredibly predictable. Like when you looked at that kindergarten, I, I would call it catchment rate, um, where it goes from 94% uh, two years ago to, to an expected 91% over time. Usually when you look at kindergarten, you see these two lines that parallel each other all the way through the graph and it's incredibly predictable about what's going to happen. In 2020, we see that rate go to, we, we see actual growth in birth rates. And we see a 68% catch rate at our schools. I've never seen that before. First of all, the catch rate in Albany historically of 93% or so is really high. And then to go to 68% in 2020 is incredible. And now how long is it going to take before we get back to 91%? Right now, we're saying it's going to take three years, um, based on what I see here. I don't know if that's right or not. We think it's as right as we know and we're relying on experts to tell us that. For, for my sense of this, we should do this again next year. In every district that I ever worked in, we did this every year because we just felt it was that important. That when you think about, um, the building decisions that we're going to make, based on the data that I see, um, you know, we, we're looking at an increase of 268 students in the elementary component of, uh, Timber Ridge and Meadow Ridge. 268, we have, don't have a ton of room there. And so that's going to, that's going to stretch us. And then another, I think it was 160 in the middle school component of Timber Ridge. Right? And so when you think about the growth that's going to incur there, it is the vast majority of it, other than Tangent, which has a lot of room. Meadow and Timber do not. Right? There's some, but not very much. And so, um, it's going to ask us for specific answers quickly. A new elementary school of 500 to 600 kids is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $40 to $50 million. And by the time we get it built, you know, it's, it's big. We have room that could show up in our bond in about five years, but it's going to take starting now in order to be talking about that and making decisions that are, they're going to get us there. And we're going to have a problem in the meantime in those two schools, at that middle school and at that elementary school out on the east side of town. And so without this data, we don't know that and we need to keep tracking this so that we, um, so that we can make good $50 million decisions on behalf of the district. And really good decisions about year over year, this is how many kindergartners we expect, or this is what we think is going to happen. I, I even, you know, look at this and go, oh, South Albany is about to be a 6A high school. And the implications that come with that. Um, and I would project that could very well happen by the end of next school year. And so that's a really important thing for us to know and be thinking about too. So there's a whole bunch of different pieces to this and, um, I, I, I just think that it's important for us to refresh this every year, at least for the next few, until we get a really good idea about what trends look like.
So, so help me then just generally, in, in 2016, we were at 9,500 students. And in 2030, we will be about the same, based on the middle projection, maybe still a little bit lower. So while we're going to need capacity in Millersburg or the east for, for, for a grade school, where will there be, uh, excess capacity? If?
Right. So if you, if you look at the, uh, projections here, really what we have is on all of the edges of our district, we have growth. The 30, I think it's a plus 38 over time at Oak Grove. I think it's something like a plus 268 at Meadow and then you go continue, and that's on the east side. And then if you go to the south, um, we're looking at 100 and, I think it was 108% growth at, um, Tangent. And so on the periphery is where we see a lot of growth and centrally, we don't see a lot. I think there, that the projection for Takina Central is plus 25 over 10 years. And if you look at the schools that bounder on that, they're all, um, looking, that, that have adjacent boundaries to Takina Central, you're looking at growth of around 30 on average. So there can be adjustments that are made, but they're, they would have to, if, I mean, Central is called Central for a reason, right? Because it's centrally located, I guess. I don't know why it was named that, but, um, it's centrally located, I guess. I don't know why it was named that. But maybe Mr. Olson can tell me that after the meeting sometime. But at any rate, you know, you're gonna have to make a number of boundary adjustments if that's gonna, if that's how you're gonna get to the answer.
No, I, I just, I was at 9,500 students.
Uh huh.
And I'm assuming that that was at, that's capacity based on the facilities we had at the time. I'm going to add a grade school, which is how many students?
Five to 600.
Five to 600? And I'm still at 9,500? So where's, where's the classrooms that don't have students anymore? Because I've increased my capacity by 500 students.
So let's go to, let's go to slide 17. And when I, if I go to the 2021 number on medium growth, it says 9,055 students this year, 9,140 next year. And if I go to the far right out to 2031, it's 9,550, which is a growth of about 495 kids, exactly, actually. And so we actually do have growth on that medium rate of total across the district of almost 500 students in that timeframe. Is that?
Okay, so I guess that assumes, then, that we are at capacity right now.
That is, the median line, it makes the assumption that not all of the students that, that we lost from the 9,400 to the 8,900 come back immediately, right? And so comparing the 2016, I can see to the 2031 to say, where is that capacity? The problem is, is it's not evenly distributed by level or by school. So for example, in 2000, well, 2021, this year, we had 643 kindergartners. In two years, in 2023, we're expected to have 108 more kinder classes, right? 108 kids in kinder.
I got you.
And so the space that we might have is at one of the high schools. It's not evenly distributed.
But what you're looking at is the 2016 data. Yes.
Yep.
And, and what you will see is that there's gonna start to be a, part of the, what happens is, we get quite a few kids at the elementary level. And so if we go out here to 2031 at 4,434 students, they are in different locations than they were in 2016.
Yep.
Sure. So then my, my last, last question is, and maybe, Rob, you can't answer this, but when the district went out in May of 2017 to pass the bond, there was language saying the bond would mature in 21 years or less. So do we have any idea which was what? And what are we carrying for 21, for another 16 years?
Right. I do know, but, I mean, I have a graph of it, but I, I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to show it to you this evening. Like, I can, I can bring it up, and we can make that in another presentation, but I think it's gonna be hard for me to share it for everybody.
That, that's, but that affects everything we do, right?
I know exactly.
Okay, all right. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, next, J5, Central Tequina.
Yeah.
Superintendent Sax.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much, Jerry. Oh, he's out. Thank you, Jerry.
He got the hint.
It's an honor, it's an honor to help you all. And thank you for, for your patience while I was going through the presentation. Great questions and discussion. It's an honor to help you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
All right. Central Tequina. So I'm gonna walk through some information around Central and Tequina in a, in a bit of a slide presentation this evening. And no doubt, as evidenced by lots of discussion from the beginning of the year until now, and will continue, I'm sure, through the rest of the year, this is a, you know, this is a really important topic to many people in this community. And I do think it deserves the best thinking and consideration that we possibly can give it, and the best information that we can have in order to make good decisions. And so it, it is, there's a significant emotional investment, and there's a significant material investment in the discussion that we will have here, as well as quality of education that students receive. And so all of that gets wrapped up, but I think it's also important for us to have the best information that we can. And this is one of the very first things that sort of came onto my radar when coming on board as the superintendent. And because it's an important community discussion, it felt like one that we should have collectively, and that we should have with good information in hand. And we've, so far, we've been able to accomplish the idea that we're having conversation. So the first, there were three things at a board meeting, I think, in September that I said I felt like we needed to have in order to make good decisions. They're probably the fourth at this point in time, and I'll talk about that a little bit as we move forward. But one was a statistically valid survey of our community and also of the Tequina and Central subset. You know, one of the things that Jerry went to fair length about tonight was to talk about the methodology that he used to put this data together, the data that he put together in, around demographics. And part of what Jerry was doing was saying, we are pretty expert at this at flow analytics, and we spend a lot of time and effort to make sure that we do this right, and that the data that we present you with is reliable. It is very difficult to do a statistically valid survey and to do it really well. Anybody who's taken a statistics course as part of their coursework at any point in time and tried to write up questions and then present them for approval and then get some shot down and rewording them 14 different times, I've been there, can know that, what I determined at the end of that course is that I don't need to write surveys because I just don't do that very well. We did engage with a company that does that really well, and I had help from Director Thompson in, you know, reviewing the questions that were asked and some modification of that in, in speaking with the folks there. But I'll spend just a tiny bit of time talking about that, but I think it's important for people to know that the firm that did this work is very much like flow analytics. They're relied on and by many to make decisions, important decisions like this, and they're professional in the work that they do. The second was Central Elementary feasibility study. And again, it's important for us to rely on the best experts that we have. We worked with HMK, who worked with Soderstrom Architects to do that work, see some representatives in the audience tonight. And again, trying to get the very best information that we can about Central Elementary School and what it takes in order to have it be the kind of school that we want it to be when kids are in attendance. And then the last part of that, or when it's used for any other kind of facility. And then the last part of that was the demographers report. And what I've tried to do in my presentation tonight is go through and pick out the high level information. I'm not gonna get into the detail that Jerry did, or get into great bits of detail on any of this, but try to prevent the pieces of information that I think are important for everybody to consider as we talk about what we're gonna do next here. And that includes the board and anybody who's watching and the people in the audience, because I think that these are the people who are gonna weigh in on, and give us feedback on decision making. So to start with, survey information. So we asked several, several different questions about this, about how the community would prefer. We used $4.1 million in one time COVID relief funds that are ESER funds. And so the amount that we had originally talked about for this project was 4.1 million. I think that'll be higher as we move forward, just because it seems like all construction costs are greater. And we'll talk about that a little bit. And then this survey was 385 respondents. They were interviewed on a set time from November 15 to November 18. The survey has a margin of error of 4.95% and a 95% level of confidence. It's also important to note that 80% of the sample of respondents came from the greater district, all parts of the district, and 20% came from the attendance boundaries of Tequina and Central Elementary Schools. Can look at the next one. So getting into this, the questions that were asked, the first question is about whether or not you would favor or oppose using federal funds to convert Tequina Elementary into a K5 school and renovate Central Elementary for offices and other district programs. And so what you see here basically is the percent, when the question was asked, of people who are in favor, 54% of people who said, I would be in favor of spending on facilities when asked the question about our, would you use federal funds to improve the facilities? We have 24% who said, no, I oppose that, and 23% who said that they were not sure. We can take a look at the next one. This question really asked the opposite, and so I need to describe this a little bit. The blue graphs are the second question. The yellow bars are the exact same answers from the first question. So they're just added in here together on one graph. So yellow is, this is what I just showed you, and blue is what's new. And the question here was, if, is to completely not ask the first question, but to only ask the second question, which is what percent, you know, would you be in favor of spending these federal funds on learning loss? And when asked that question, 77% of the people say, yes, I would be in favor of spending the resource on learning loss. 16% say, no, I'm opposed, and 8% said that they're not sure. And the, the look at this is to say 77% on the question of would you do this on learning loss, when that's the only question that's asked, or 54% on facilities, if that's the only question that's asked. I wanna make sure that I've got that right. Let me go back one. Yes, that's right. 77% learning loss and 54% facilities. Thank you. Okay. And then the final question was an either or question. If you had to choose between spending the dollars on learning loss or facilities, which would you choose? And in this, 65% said we would spend the money on learning loss. 18% said I would spend it on facilities. And then the other two questions are, or the other two responses are, other or I'm not sure. On each one of these graphs, I also included the numbers for the Central Tequina attendance area, but I think they're getting chopped off at the bottom. The, the number on this is 67%, if I recall correctly. Does it show it on there?
67.
So the, the pink bar goes to 67% when just asked within the Central Tequina attendance area. So it's just a slight deviation. And that's actually the case on each one of the graphs. It's about a two or three point deviation from the, from the norm, not, not statistically significant. So when asked the question about what preference would be, it would be spend money on learning loss, not on facility, and by a fairly substantial margin. Okay. Second, so that, that's the survey. Second question was around feasibility study. And so Soderstrom Architects provided the study, and in conjunction with HMK. And the question, the question here was around Central Elementary School only, and the site and the building. And it was to evaluate the building as used as one of three different things, a grade three through five elementary, a comprehensive K5 campus, or as a district support program building. So each of those three, 3, 5, K5, district support program building. District administration participated in this and gave some input and feedback. So did District Program Management, Soderstrom Architects, and then there were some mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers and/or peoples. The facility issues, first of all, I think it's important for everybody to know, it's a 107-year-old building. I decided I'd put that in big bold. In 1915, I think, was its first year of operation, and so it's pretty easy math to get to 107 years. There are some facility issues in the report, just as in the, just in, just in all of this, I've gone through and picked out the things that I think are most important or that people would agree to, or would at least say are at issue, and not the entirety of the list. There's a bigger list than, than these six bullet points. But certainly, we hear, and people can agree, that cafeteria space is an issue at Central Elementary. So is the radiant heat and the ventilation of the building. The ramp wall height is an issue around safety. Exterior windows are identified, parking and traffic circulation, accessibility for kindergarten, grade one and grade two students also. Some of those things, I would point out, have, are part of a 107-year-old building, and they've been like that for 107 years. Other things have probably changed slightly over time. Okay, thank you. We used three, there were three use calculations. And again, the grade three through five elementary, the total cost element, and this was, total cost for the 3, 5 elementary, that was estimated, and this was all the recommendations that were included in the report. And you'll need to look at the full report in order to see all of these. I'm not gonna gum up this presentation with all of that, is $4,704,325. If you turn it into a K5 elementary, and the total cost estimate of all recommendations is about 8.5 million. And a district office support building is about the same amount, 8.5 million dollars. Okay. Upgrade, repair and costs. So I wanted to go through and, and identify some of those that came up. There are others, obviously, to get to the dollar amounts that I just shared with you. But one of the key issues around the building is expanding the cafeteria and doing something with the kitchen. The 3, 5 elementary had a, had a $210,000 price tag associated with that. I believe that it expanded the space by 13, by 1,300 to square feet. And then there was another one for the grade K through five. It was a grade K5 through five school, which would make that even larger, and it was a $630,000 price tag. Price tag for new HVAC systems, and part of this was discovery of, you know, where the raises could be, where the ventilation could be put in and so forth, totaled 1.479 million. I think that's a really important number for us to know. The ramp wall height, for example, not inexpensive overall as compared to some of the other things, 42,000. Exterior windows, were they to be replaced? $520,000 cost associated with that. Part of that is, these are specialty windows that need to be made so that, so that it meets the historical requirements, so that the, the way it looks is correct according to the historical requirements. Then some other things, clean repoint and seal existing brick where needed, 135,000. Interior paint refresh, 100. Remove existing bathroom, renovate existing bathrooms, 280,000. Electrical system upgrade, depending on what you did, 391 to 609,000. Again, these are just some of the costs, but I think it's important for people to see these and get an idea of the scope. So with that, that talks quite a bit about the facility costs and changes. I'll be happy to answer questions as we get further into this. But I just wanna hit big picture for people to have a good understanding of this, and then talk a little bit about growth and boundary adjustments. So when using the medium growth rate, which is what we just saw from the demographers projection, elementary program is expected to grow by 466 students over, over the next 10 years. I think that Director Nyquist is correct, that isn't a change from 2016 school year significantly, or it's very close to the exact same numbers, but it is in different places. The majority of growth is at the edges of the district. And again, it's 260 students at Timber Ridge and Meadow Ridge and the K5 component of those two schools, 108 students in Tangent. We have about six vacant classrooms in Tangent. It actually, I think, helps the school operate more efficiently to grow by that much. Oak Grove, we're looking at 39 students. And so those are all schools that are on the periphery of the district. And that totals 407 between the three schools, 407 of the 466 that we're projecting. Tequina and Central and adjacent schools, I just think this is important to know because it talks specifically about Central and Tequina, which would be a growth of 26 students over 10 years. And then the adjacent schools, that would be easiest to adjust the boundaries for, if we're gonna make any adjustment between Tequina and Central, are Waverly Sunrise and Liberty at the respectives of 34, 26, and 15 students. Okay. And then the last thing that I didn't originally put down was budget. We're in budget season. Been looking at budget for most of my tenure with the district with concerned eye, I guess I would say, and trying to get a handle on what our budget situation looks like. Originally, when we talked about Tequina, we said 4.1 million. I think today, with a more, more accurate number that's coming from our experts out of HMK, we're looking at about $5.5 million to do the Tequina project. The Tequina project would be in addition of six classrooms. And I just think it's important for us to know accurate numbers. Costs have gone up, and some refinements have been done. We also are including 1.5% solar requirement. We don't have to put them at Tequina, but we have to add 1.5% of the total cost. We don't have to put them at To Kena, but we have to add 1.5% of the total cost to alternative energy sources. And so that's included in the 5.5 million. The funding source for this is ESSER III. ESSER III has a total of 15 point, 15,750,000. We need to reserve 20% of that for learning loss, which turns into, you know, 3.15 million dollars that we need to hold aside for learning loss and that we have put into our ESSER III plan and turned into the state, an amount that does that for us. We are spending about 7 million. Um, there is some discussion about the exact number on, on that project, but because I put it into this, by God, I'm going to stick to it. But it's from 7 to 7.5 million dollars on the South Shore addition. And that will come out of ESSER III funding. And so if I look at the totals, taking into Kena, South Shore and learning loss, that puts us at 15,650,000. We have spent some ESSER III funds on something other than learning loss this year. That totals about $300,000. And so with the commitment to South Shore, the dollars that we have spent and the 20% learning loss and To Kena, um, we would slightly more than spend the dollars that are available in ESSER III. Um, we do have some other financial demands that we're facing that we need to, you know, find answers to. Um, some of the, some of that is staffing, textbooks, Title IX and Title IX compliance. Those are just a few of the things that, um, we've been looking at. And I know we spent a lot of time looking at budget today, you know, in my office and trying to figure out how to fit everything that we want to into our budget. There are some other funds that also exist. We have a construction excise tax or CET. And after we finish our transportation facility, we think there's approximately $2 million left in that construction excise tax fund. And, um, we, I, I think it's important for us to know, and we just went through that the central upgrade costs are, you know, somewhere between approximately 5 million to 9 million, depending on what use we would determine for that school. And, um, it, which brings me to say you can't do all that. Right? I mean, if, if we total all that up, you can't do all that, or at least we can't right now. And it does bring up the question about, and begin a conversation for what our next bond might look like. And so I just think that's an important question. And so that concludes my presentation. I think it's information that everybody needs to know. As we think about how we plan to move forward here, what I didn't want to do tonight is come in and make a recommendation. Um, I think it's important for everybody to have the information that I have and to sit with that for a little bit, to interact with one another in the community and for the board to have some discussion or ask some questions tonight so that I can get a sense of what you all's thinking is on this and so that the community might as well. And maybe that's something that we need to do over time also. I am prepared to consider making a recommendation at our next board meeting, which would be on May 16th. And have the board at least hear that and consider it. And you could take action then, or you might want to wait until our first meeting in June. But I think that's where we sit tonight, be happy to answer questions. Or find out what other information you need.
That was a lot of information. I think it was worth the work as well. Thank you for that.
Sure.
So we asked the question, uh, would the community prefer spending the money on, on the federal money on learning loss or on facilities? Clearly, they preferred on learning loss. The, the, the challenge is, how do we do that? Like, I, I would love to be able to buy that, if you will, but that seems to be very elusive.
Yes, um, I think it is. We, you know, we offered a robust summer school last year. We'll offer another one this year. Um, I, we have dollars set in ESSER to do that again the following year. We've been really fortunate to have the state come in with fairly significant dollars to help with that. In each of, well, each of last summer and this summer, they talk about making this something that looks a little more permanent. But we'll know when we, when the legislature convenes and makes decisions in the following year. There also are, um, you know, opportunities around class size, numbers of staff that we have to help students who are behind. And a variety of other, you know, efforts to do that. We certainly think that we can impact learning loss, but it takes a substantial effort.
So what's our data or evidence on what we improved the learning loss last year through summer school?
I don't know that I have an answer to that question.
Yeah, it's a difficult one to answer just because of the assessments that are typically given in the spring, both at the state level and district levels, didn't happen in the same way be, because of how school was. So it's not as if every single student takes a pre-assessment before summer school and then a post-assessment after in the same way. This summer, however, for students in elementary, the focus will be on literacy and there will be a pre and post. And for middle school, it'll be on literacy, reading and math. And so we'll have better data, but it's not as, as linear. And student learning generally isn't, but yeah.
And not that this is about, I hope it's about student learning at the high school, but specifically around credits earned.
Yep.
We'll be able to track credits earns very, very closely this summer. And we can report on what took place last summer as well. And, and that is a, a measurement around, you know, eventual graduation. And I would hope that those credits also impact learning, obviously, right? But it's a different kind of counting, perhaps.
So do we have an idea when we're going to have a better plan or be able to present to the community what we're planning to do for the summer?
I think that we can present on that as early as next meeting. We, we actually, we're in the throes of working on that and we're close to having details. Uh, we, we have a lot of details about it.
Great.
And so we can do that.
I think that'd be appreciated.
Great.
Uh, the other question I have for you, uh, kind of on learning loss. We're going to have another presentation about academic progress. And I think that's, is that going to be next month or June, or when will that be?
That will be in June.
June, okay, thank you.
Regarding, uh, central facility costs, would it be possible to put together kind of a priority list of where the money would be best spent if we were going to do it? And kind of where a, a line would be to get most of what you want if we can't get it all? Is that something we could put together?
I think we definitely could do, uh, could do that. We have the numbers that we need to take a look at that. We would need to sit down with a group and talk about what the priorities are off the top of my head. I think certainly HVAC is very important to everybody. It, it, it deals with, you know, the variabilities of heating and cooling within the school, gets rid of radiators, uh, creates a different kind of ventilation situation when it comes to just in general, the health of the air, especially in relationship to COVID and so forth, because you can, you know, put scrubbers and move air through the air handlers with an HVAC system. And it gets rid of some banging and rattling that we hear about once in a while. So I, I would think that off the top of my head, anyway, that's a, that's a pretty big one. Obviously cafeteria is an issue if you're going to have students in there and one that comes up often. And then the third one is ramp height. Those are three, you know, three really big considerations. Um, I think the cost on those three in total are probably about 2.5 million. For me to sit here and do that independently probably isn't very fair, right?
No, I got you.
But when I, but when I talk to people and there's conversation about it, those are three that, that come up substantially.
Okay.
We certainly can ask those questions and put something together.
It'd be interesting, yeah.
I have a, more of a technical question. The amount shown, um, on making Central a K through 5, upgrading it to a K through 5 versus district programs was, was, came in very similar, about 8 million each. And one of the concepts of this whole thing was you could improve, you know, improving for classrooms of 25 students isn't the same as improving for a office of three or four adults. So why did that, why did that number come in so similar?
So I think part of the reason for the number to be as similar as it is is because of the parts of the building that gets touched. And specifically because, um, you'll see that there's lots of different things that you could call it. And I've called it a district program building. And I'm, I'm calling it that because we would move district program into the building that would have students in it. And so we would move like some of our behavior programs, BIC program, and some of those things where students would still be in the building, but they would be students in specific programs. There would also be adults there in offices. But in order to do that, there are still some needs around cafeteria that, that are, you know, a significant piece of the cost. There are still some, um, you know, needs around the ramp heights and HVAC and so forth. Some of the things, regardless of what you do with it, are going to be part of it.
Okay.
And, and in order to make, you know, to take a classroom and actually make it into a decent office space, if you will, um, it's, it, it costs some money and different than leaving it as a classroom. The, the other thing about Central is that there are some really specific requirements around the interior surfaces. So some of the wood that is up on the walls and those kinds of things must remain as part of the historical requirement. And the city's been insistent about that in the past when the school's done something and it, and it is more expensive to do that work.
Well, you almost dovetail into my, my discussion here, you know. I don't know why we're sitting here, we spent, and you'll hear in the, um, report of the, uh, bond report and activities, we began the $7 million project at South Shore. These were always combined. And here we are now, Central is teamed up against learning loss. It happens all the time. That is the brief history of this, of Central in general, is there's an attitude that you can't do anything. You can't do anything. You know, we had, we all got an email from a nurse in January who said, this is how many burns we had in January because of the heaters. And for all these years, it seems, and I'm not, I'm not a fabricator, but it seems like a simple solution would have been to fabricate something to prevent burns. But the attitude is always you can't do anything. You know, and this has been delayed. We had, in September, October, we had all the teachers and staff came before us and said, we're tired of it. We're tired of it. And they were blunt. And it's pretty rare in my brief time here, or even as a parent sitting out there, that a whole building speaks in one voice. And, and we say great things about teachers and staff. I think it's on us as leaders to help them. And we got to help them when they overcome obstacles, to help our kids. And, and here we are, Central goes up, you know, you, you mentioned, did I remember the discussion with Nelson Research? Nelson Research is legit. And I remember arguing with the, with the question maker because I said, you're asking people throughout the district, hey, do you want to spend this money on a school, a small school, not anywhere near your neighborhood? Or do you want to spend it on programs and staff? On staff? These, this, this money has to be spent by 2024. I don't know how we could have used the word staff in there. But it, it just, it happens over and over again. Central, just the attitude is don't. And so in some ways, I appreciate you, Rob. You, you put a super tan saxon, you put some dollar amounts. And this is the first time we've put some dollar amounts of what it's going to take. If this community absolutely insists that Central has to remain a school, and I'm fine with that, even a 3, 4, 5, we're putting some numbers on it, what it's going to take to make it a school. Otherwise, the kids are just getting, they're getting less than. You know, the doors are open, you know, I drop my kid off, these mornings are cold. The, the window, their windows open and it's 35 degrees out because, you know, keep the, uh, the air circulating. We, we had the meeting at Central and the air scrubbers were going, they're loud. It, it's, it just keeps getting kicked down, down the road. And, and I just don't understand. I don't understand, 7 millions for South Shore, no problem. Central does less than that. And we've got to have this, we've got to line it up with all the other, uh, issues we have. You know, and I'll just, I'll, my last narrative that explains the issue of Central is, I've been bugging, so about a year ago, the principal, let me start back. The, the, if you've ever been to Central, the playground at Central is kind of pathetic. It's just deteriorated over, it's like the rest of the building, it's just deteriorated. And it's to such a degree that someone in the neighborhood donated to the district $5,000 to build a better playground. And the principal combined that with some SIA money, got some students at Oregon State, some physical education students with the PE teacher at Central and created a, a really worthwhile physical, physical education based playground. All the, all the building material is sitting at the district offices and they've been sitting there since September because now we don't know what sent the future of Central is. And that's, you know, one year they're going to miss out, that's, that's okay. I'm not trying to make that fact a, a big deal. What I'm saying is it highlights, do not touch Central. That's what we always are saying, do not touch Central. And it is less than, it is less than. And, and I think the community, I like this idea, the community needs to see, those are the numbers that's going to take to make it, to make education delivery at Central worthwhile. And that's, that's all I got to say.
And, and just, couple of challenges for me in thinking about this. And, um, you know, kind of coming into it after the fact to a certain degree, for me was trying to get a handle on ESSER funds. And so, you know, sitting through several different presentations by the Oregon Department of Education on ESSER funds, their use and, and intent and so on. And, you know, hearing fairly loudly that the intent of ESSER funds by the federal government in their passage was around student learning loss specifically, and they did require it. Now, there's no, there's no requirement beyond that, right? Than the 20% usage. But I do think that the intent of the federal government was that these dollars would be used on learning loss. We've been fortunate.
Wait a second, the South Shore project is coming out of this.
Agreed.
At a $7 million too.
Yep, and I'm getting there. And so I think that, you know, the South Shore is coming out of that too. And, you know, I don't know that there's a better reason around South Shore than around Central, except.
I don't want to pit them against each other.
Right.
It's just, yeah.
Except that one of them is a school that, you know, I know is going to last, that, that we're going to use and keep and have students in for the long term at Central. And there was a question about what to do at To Kena Central. And so, but it was about, are we going to close a school? Or not close a school, but are we going to use a school for a different purpose?
There is constantly and always a question.
Right.
It happens, it happens, it happens. And kids, year after year, cohort after cohort, miss out. And we just pretend because the doors are open and, and we drop our kids off and everything's fine. But then the people that we trust, both classified nurses and teachers, have told us specifically and clearly, they're, they're tired of it, they're done with it. Teachers are making decisions now about whether they stay at, at Central. And so, um, you know, that's, we, I'm trying to interrupt you, but that just constantly happens. And I'm glad we finally, for the first time in a long time, we have a dollar amount to it. Uh, it's always just keep Central open, keep it open.
And I love your passion about it. It, but it just seemed like it demanded a bigger community conversation. Thanks.
It does.
So it, first to the issue of, uh, the initial approval of South Shore. And it wasn't just South Shore. We approved Waverly. We approved something at North Albany Grade School. And when we, when we did that, it was my understanding that the existing classrooms that they were in, uh, their useful life had expired and those were not acceptable conditions. And at that time, I sure didn't have a, it's one versus the other. Central wasn't included in that action item before us at that time. But, but I, I do think Director Thompson, uh, the issue you raise that I'm also uncomfortable with, we're having a conversation and it's a, a long-term investment conversation, if you will. But what happens next year? What, what are we doing right now for kids next year? And at the very least, you would like to think that you would put a new HVAC system in at Central. But if you do that, you don't have the money to do what you'd like to do at To Kena. There's also the issue of what we're doing around learning and grade level and all of that. So I think part of the conversation needs to be, and, and you have the whole issue of whether or not, uh, the sister school concept works. And so part of this needs to be, what are the reasonable resources we can marshal now, between now and next fall, to improve this, this situation? That, as I understand it, has been going on for some time.
Yeah, I'd just say, do not forget, we are putting aside 3 million for ESSER III. And that was only one as. And that was only one, as the superintendent highlighted, we provided summer programs last year. We have plans to provide summer programs this year. I don't know, I don't know what the number is. I think you alluded to, we can't just buy learning loss back. So I don't know what the, the good number is on that. But it's not like we're not spending anything on learning loss. We certainly are. And it seems like we're headed towards taking this four million and splitting it up between learning loss. I don't know. I mean, it would be superintendent's decision to bring before us. But it seems like where we're headed, and maybe you're right. If I'm really forced, I think you start with HVAC because it literally does not have an HVAC system right now. It's not a new HVAC system. It literally does not have one. So I can see where we're headed towards that.
So you, you start with that then? And then are we making that eight million dollar commitment to be figured out how to fund down the road? I guess the other thing I would say is.
I'm sorry to interrupt. You know, the question is right now, right now. I agree with you, right now. Right now, as you know, you can occupy, there's occupying a building and there's, is that really the best place to be? It's not going to, it's not going to, it's not a failure rate right now. But it's certainly less than buildings throughout the district. Parents are getting, and the great work of our teachers, our teachers don't sit there and tell parents. You know, I didn't know all this until I started volunteering inside, inside the building. That was an eye-opener for me. And when I talked to the parents, most, most involved know about it, know all these issues. The ones who just dropped their kids off and the doors open, they, they might hear about it a little bit, but they don't, they don't really know. And so, yeah, whatever. I realize we're making long-term decisions, but I'm talking about this year, next year, tomorrow, tomorrow. It's not the best, it's not the best delivery of education.
Might I suggest that the next two budget sessions we have coming up be expanded from the hour that they're now slated for? Because I don't, I don't know how we go through a budget process without rolling our sleeves up on these issues.
All right, okay. K reports, we don't have any reports. Next, bond business reports.
Chair Morse, members of the board. You've read the February end month, end of month report. And you, and you saw great news that West Albany High School received a facility grant, $114,000. So that was great news. So that brings all the schools that were part of that program, Oak Grove, Meadow Ridge, South Albany High and West Albany High to over 600,000.
That money originally was set aside by the legislature for furniture fixture and equipments. When they changed the bonding language, that now allows furniture fixture and equipment to be used by general obligation bonds. It used to have a, have to have a useful life of greater than a year. That program was set aside. And so we've done those applications to try to make sure that we are able to get grants like that for additional classrooms. So that's a great win for the overall bond program in monies that were never anticipated, that we've been able to bring to be able to do more projects here at the tail end of the project.
As far as the last remaining bond project is West Albany High. And you saw in the February report, we were finishing up mechanical issues. And now we are waiting for final balancing reports, ASB documents and finishing off punch list items at the school. For non-bond funded projects, we have transportation. In the report, we saw the installation of in-ground lifts and pouring concrete for the, for the building slabs. And now we're looking at, all the steel columns are above ground now. The roof is getting installed. The metal wall panels are getting installed. So if you drive down Ferry Street, you can, you can see it from the street. And pretty amazing, a lot, a lot of work was taken to get there. For South Shore Elementary School, the report showed their geotechnical services and preparing for design development documents. And so now we are bidding the moving of the modulators to get ready for construction. So those modulators will get moved over the summer. And then getting ready to bid the project in the fall so the rest of the construction can get started. And there's also a land use application getting submitted for over the summer as well. And then for North Albany Elementary School and Waverly Elementary School, those modulators, the report talked about design documents proceeding in February. And then so now the project is out to bid. And we're getting ready to start excavation in May. And, and the modulators are planned to arrive in May. So considering supply chain issues, that's, that's great news. We're on schedule for that. So they'll get installed over the summer and be ready for the fall. Any questions?
The, just because I see them all the time because my son goes to West. The unisex bathrooms there in West, what's their status?
It's gender neutral.
There we go. Is that the proper term?
Yes. They are, we're going to finish up design and go out to bid. Probably looking at a fall, winter construction. Just looking at the construction industry, that would be the best way to go. But we're still finalizing that plan.
Can I add that there are gender neutral bathrooms available, like kind of through the office for students that need to use them now?
We're working hard on it. And they're going to try to do everything we can to get it done as quickly as possible. We recognize it's a priority of the school. It just, the challenges we're facing in construction, it's just difficult. So we are, we are working aggressively to get it done for the school.
So I know we'll have conversation, but, and I'll have opportunity. But if there's any way that you can speed that up, I'd sure appreciate it. I just think that the message that we send, that the last thing that we're getting done out of that entire project is that, isn't a very good look. And I, you know, I, if those could be accomplished over the, over summertime, we've had those things taped up and covered up for an entire school year. And, and I just think it creates a really, we've got kids who don't feel very accepted sometimes, who are being sent the message that they're not very accepted. And so, you know, I don't know what their price tag is on that to speed that up over the summertime. But I feel like it's something that we ought to really take a hard look at. So that's just my, my, I'd say two cents, but it's probably my $50,000 worth, so.
With that said, one of the things that we can do is to, when we bid it, ask for two prizes. One to be done by the end of summer, the start of school, and then one.
That'd be great, thanks.
And then we can make a decision.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
I just want one bid. I want them done before school starts. Send it out and see what you get back.
Okay.
If nobody can do it by then, that will, that will tell us that that doesn't work. But it, it's.
The only thing that I would, we need to consider is that if we do that, we lose then that bidding window and we now have to start over, which pushes us later in the fall. And so that's one of the risks of that strategy.
Okay, all right. Do it your way. Hope it works.
You're the, you're the bid expert. Hey, thank, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
M, new business. We put that off till May sixteenth. Future agenda items. Other business? Have a motion to adjourn?
A move or adjourn?
Go ahead.
All those who approve?
Aye.
Thank you.